Okay, South Route, October High School District 120. Regular March Meeting is now an open session. Welcome, please.
Mr. Sarfer. Mrs. Alcorn.
Here.
Dr. Lynch.
Here.
Mrs. Taliani.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari. Mr. Sparks.
Here. Please stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get everyone. We'll get started in minutes. So when ready, we have two sets of minutes. So when ready, I'll lead a motion approval from the Board for the regular meeting minutes on February 15th, and then we have a special meeting on March 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani.
Yes.
Mr. Merba.
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna, we'll circle back to the President's Report. We'll move that further down in the agenda to just before the committee report outs. And let's get right to recognition. We got quite a bit of recognition tonight, so it's really good. We're gonna start out, we've got two, a couple groups of student athletes, and then also staff members. So we'll start out with the student athletes, of which we have a lot here tonight, so that's exciting. So first off is girls bowling. So both of these, these groups competed at the state level, so girls bowling did as well. And we had seven girls, and of course, the head coaches that went to state. And as a group, they finished sixth place with the girls finishing in various areas along the way. So that was excellent. So we have Christine Ricky, Olivia Weber, Anna Ricky, Mackenzie Hamilton, Cameron Para, Cameron Osepinski, and Melvina Jordan. And they are led by coaches, head coach Jim McCabe and assistant coach Scott Weber. So, great job, girls. And I think it's worth noting that in girls bowling, there's no distinction between the different levels, the class 1A, 2A, 3A, and such. It's all one large group, and so you got a lot of different size schools competing, so that's even more impressive. So, great job, girls. Also, I must have missed Victoria Campbell. We also have Victoria Campbell, thank you. So, great job in your accomplishment representing the district at the state level. It's very good, so. Also tonight, we have wrestling. So we have actually girls and boys wrestling represented here. Kylie Damjanic, if I got that right, thank you. We congratulate Kylie for getting to the state level. And since her first ever female wrestler at LP to qualify for state, so congratulations to Kylie. And also Connor Lord. She finished second place in class 2A, and also recently named the News Tribune Wrestler of the Year, so congratulations Connor Lord. And of course, they are led by head coach Matt Redholtz, assistant coach Nolan Keating, and the other assistant coach Mark Lord. And so, good job to the wrestlers and also to the girls for what you've done. And, you know, all the things you gotta do in school, and also leading the charge for LP going to the state level was great. We always like to also send out a shout out to those who help you at home, friends, family, that keep you moving along through school and practice and all that stuff that you gotta do. So, so good job. So, stick around when we're all done with recognition. We'll have a certificate for you. But we also want to recognize one of our staff members, and that would be Mrs. Kelly Leebhart, Spanish and ELL teacher, who's doing some good things for the district. And I would like to turn it over to Mr. Gibson, if I could, to speak to her on her behalf and tell us a little bit more about it.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Mrs. Leebhart. I am very privileged to work collaboratively with Mrs. Leebhart from the perspective of serving as our district's EL coordinator. And Mrs. Leebhart serves as our teacher for our ELL students. She also teaches a section of Spanish I, and she teaches our AP Spanish Language and Culture as well. So she is extremely involved in many different areas. But I want to talk specifically about some of the other things that she does to go above and beyond the call of duty with respect to our EL population. Our EL students, our numbers have gone up a little bit over the last few years. And Kelly does just a phenomenal job of, first and foremost, showing a great deal of compassion to our students, the students that she serves. She is always looking for ways and different resources that she can find to support those students. She is very, has been very instrumental in a couple of things that I wanted to point out. First of all, she just recently took her students on a field trip to the Adler Planetarium, which was a fantastic experience for those students. We had a debrief in our bilingual parent advisory committee meeting the other day from that, and it sounded like the trip was successful, and the kids really enjoyed that opportunity. She's also been very instrumental in bringing in a guest speaker to speak with our EL families. That will be on March 28th. And so she has been in contact with our guest speaker, Dr. Ferny Ramirez Hernandez, who has spoken in nearby schools, including Mendota, to bilingual families. And he's gonna be speaking on adolescents. And so Kelly has been just kinda leading the charge with that, and I appreciate her efforts there. She is very, very organized in everything she does. She is an extremely good communicator. There's a lot of paperwork and a lot of communication that goes out because we do screener. We have to screen our EL students in certain situations. We also have to administer the access test, which Kelly really is a great deal, does a great deal with as far as the access testing. That was over a period of four days. So there's just an awful lot involved with that part of the job. And on top of that, I just want to point out the success that we're seeing in her AP Spanish class as well. In her AP Spanish class, I just want to point out that in the two years that she's been our teacher, we've seen a rate of 78% of our students who take that class and that exam have gotten a three or better on the AP exam. LP as a whole, all of our AP classes is around 69%, which is really fantastic. But 78%, it shows that she's doing a phenomenal job in that area as well. I could go on and on and on. Really, Kelly does a fantastic job, and this recognition is very, very much deserved. So, I just want to congratulate her on that.
On behalf of the board, we tell you we appreciate all the hard work you've done. Thank you very much. If all the folks here are getting recognized, it just shows that LP is very strong in many areas. Without further ado, then we have a certificate for all of you. So when you hear your name called, come up and meet the Board. Christine Ricky. Christine? Olivia Weber? Annalise Ricky? Mackenzie Hamilton?
Nice job. Congratulations.
Victoria Campbell? Melvina Jordan? Cameron Osepinski? Cameron Para? Coach Scott Weber? And head coach Jim McCabe? Okay, now onto wrestlers. So we have Kylie Damjanic. Honor Lord? Matt Redholtz? Coach Mark Lord? And last, for certainly Annalise, Kelly Leebhart.
I feel like we should say, "We B.A."
Wow!
So is she in relation to the, I don't know if we believe.
I don't think so. I think it's spelled differently.
No, it's not.
Nope, it's the same.
How are you, Gary?
Good, Gary.
Good to see you.
Ready for tomorrow?
Absolutely. Yeah, I picked them to win the first two games. And then we've been saying, "Marys."
I think there's gonna be a lot of upset.
I agree. I think it's up for grabs.
Unfortunately, it's a bit too inconsistent.
We approve them, we can beat the top tier teams.
Well, they said on the selection program that, I guess both of those schools are the same. They said either one could win by 20, 25 points.
Okay, tonight we also have Division Spotlight section here. So tonight, we're gonna hear from Abby Goy regarding Special Education Department.
Hello, everyone. I'm so excited to be here tonight to highlight my division, Special Education. Like Dr. Blaski said, my name is Abby Goy, and I teach English II and III within our Special Education Division, and I also have some co-teaching opportunities. Now, if you notice, my slide, it says Reading Plus/Dreambox. Reading Plus was recently bought up by a company called Dreambox. But when I was talking to my sophomores today, telling them I was gonna meet with you tonight, I said, "What does the Board of Education need to know?" They said, "You can tell them anything you want. Just do not refer to it as Dreambox. It's Reading Plus in our heart." So for the sake of the presentation, we're gonna go with Reading Plus. So what is Reading Plus? It is our online curriculum that we use within our special education programs, 1 through 4, as well as our Title I classes in their English department. We use it about two to three days a week. Students are responsible for completing those lessons in class and outside of school. Each week, we focus on different skills to help those students become stronger readers, and it moves at their own pace. So they're assessed three times a year. They have an initial benchmark, then they have one that's usually about around Christmas break, and then they'll have one at the end of the year. Reading Plus boasts that within 60 hours, they should be receiving 2.5 level gains, which is incredible for our students who are low-level readers but have high interests. What does it look like for our students? So after logging in through the Clever Portal, students will see their dashboard, which is designed to maximize engagement and communicate the goals within their progress. So it's important for students to understand how they're growing as readers. You can see down at the bottom, it says their words per minute, how many lessons they've completed, and it's just very visually engaging for the students. From the lesson screen, students will be able to access the instructional components. Reading to access a library of rich, engaging text and begin the reading journey. They also have vocabulary and visual skills. What I like about Reading Plus, it adjusts their pace, depth, and scaffolding. So like I said at the beginning of the year, they take those benchmark tests. The computer tells us automatically the level that they fall into, and then they can make those gains throughout their school year. It's content appropriate, they have appropriate reading rate, and then opportunities to read and reread text, which is important because in the real world, they're gonna be rereading text. As you can see, these are some of the selections. So when they get on those pages, those boxes up at the top, those colored boxes, are just different options for them to choose from. What I really appreciate about Reading Plus, they have a lot of nonfiction tasks. And if you've taken a standardized test recently, it's all nonfiction texts. So the personalized guided reading, students have that reading component. They're able to choose the text that they want to read, which is so important. You can't tell a high schooler that they're gonna be reading a specific test. It just doesn't work that way. Choice is so important for our students. They also have a guided visual window, as you can see in that blue box. That just helps them become stronger readers, and it trains their eyes. Engaging in reading, what I really also appreciate about Reading Plus is they pull from a lot of texts like Highlight, the Smithsonian, Tween, all different kinds of places. They're pulling these texts for students. So it's texts that they might not have sought on their own, but they're really excited. I had a student that was reading about the history of Tootsie Rolls. I mean, how fun, how interesting. They have 19 reading levels that range from early first grade all the way through college level. Five different levels of content for older students to choose from, and then texts from those global sources as mentioned. Vocabulary, Reading Plus teaches students a research-based, sorry, compilation of highly valuable cross-curriculum general academic vocabulary. They have to master those skills within their levels before they level up to the next one. They also have fluency skills. Based on visuals, students who need that additional fluency support are recommended to develop their visual skills using those two key activities, the flash and scan. These activities improve the student's ability to immediately recognize common letter clusters in words and move fluently throughout the texts. Sight skills for students, so these are the skills that we teach within each lesson, and then we do subset skills. So close reading, main idea themes, interaction of ideas, use of language, text structure, point of view, image scaffolding, reasoning and rhetoric, and comparative reading. This is also what we use to help guide their IEP goals and benchmarks. Now, we are dealing with a group of high schoolers. Sometimes they run into a little snag. We have warning messages. So this is what a student might see if they're on hold, or if they're moving too quickly through the lessons, or if they're moving too slowly through the lessons. If that happens, they might be put on a hold, which is important to note because they are stuck on that hold until a teacher meets with them to kind of remedy what went wrong, which is nice. It's a nice conversation to have with them so we don't continue to run into these issues in the future. Because sometimes when they're on hold on a weekend, they're emailing you like crazy. It offers a lot of high-quality data. Like I said, we use these for the students' IEPs. It's really visually appealing, it's easy for parents to understand, it's easy for students to understand, it's very color-coded, and it gives all that potential outcomes for the students. So we can see, the computer generates where they're at the beginning of the year, where they think they need to be, and realistically where they might be based on their performance. This is the daily dashboard that we see as a teacher. What's super nice is we get real-time information on students. I can see how many lessons they did, what time they did it, and they have access to this curriculum in and outside of school 24 hours. I had a student who just recently went to Disney World. Woo-hoo, yay for her. She was down in Orlando, Florida, doing her Reading Plus. So she can access it from anywhere, 24/7. I don't have to worry about it. It's really set in stone, and I was just, I was happy for her. I was happy for me, too. As well as assessment, like I said, their benchmark, they have initial, a midterm, and an end-of-the-term assessment. This is really, really great data for progress towards goals for students each quarter. And it's also nice to share with their parents and their case managers. Teacher support features. Not only is this excellent for the students, it's nice as a teacher to have that 24-hour support. We have a little bot that we can talk to any questions we have. We also have a lot of teaching tools, as well as the teacher resources, where we get a lot of things for our weekly lessons, a lot of materials, videos. They're always very high interest. Student motivation. We're doing this for the students. We want them to stay motivated. There's a lot of activities within Reading Plus that encourage them to continue to do well. For instance, we played Reading Plus Bingo. So they had to choose different genres, and if they got a bingo, they got a prize. So it encourages them to kind of step out of their comfort zone. Also, we do a lot of student tracking. So they're tracking their own goals, they're tracking how many words they're reading per minute, how many lessons they have each week. So they're really held accountable for their IEP goals and benchmarks and their progress in the class. And that's it. Actually, we've been using it for three years. I had a really unique opportunity to pilot it, January 2020. Fast forward, two months later, we were at home. So I got to really see its full potential outside of the classroom and remote learning, and then with the students when we came back full-time. And then when we were hybrid schedule as well. So it was nice to have that opportunity for our students to continue to make significant gains even though they didn't see me physically. Yes, yes. We're really happy to have it in the Special Education Department. We use it all the time, I reference it a lot. I'm super passionate about it, I could probably talk for ever and ever. But I'm really glad that you guys had us here tonight. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, next up would be public comment. Have you signed up for public comment? Jim? Hey, Jim, you know the drill?
Yep, I won't be that long tonight. I'm Jennifer Ebner, LaSalle County Clerk, as you guys know. There's a program that is offered to high school juniors and seniors that have a 3.0 or higher grade point average out of a 4.0. They can be an election judge on Election Day. And I know that is spring break for LP. So my office has sent this over, but I'm not sure who it went to or if you guys had received it. So I wanted to come tonight and bring you a small packet of it. You can make copies, but if there's any students out there that might want to do it, maybe civics class, maybe government class, something, they do, it is a long day, so they will start at 5:00 in the morning and end whenever the polls are done with all the, you know, the paperwork and stuff that has to be done. So 7:30, 8 o'clock maybe, if it's done. But they also do get paid. So they will get compensation. They have to come to a class. My high school training class is Saturday, March 25th, from 9:00 to 1:00. They need to fill out a form, get it back to our office, or at least call us and let us know that they're gonna come, and we can have them fill out a form that morning while they're there. As long as they attend the class, they pass the test, which everybody gets to pass the test. They take it home with them, so we go over stuff. And then they work on Election Day. They can make $185 in the day. So that's kind of good money for a high school student. So I wasn't sure if you guys were aware of the program, or I'm not sure if you can ask any questions during public comment, if you have any other questions towards us. I'm not gonna stay tonight because I gotta get home and do dinner. But you guys can definitely call my office tomorrow or any other day if you're interested, and talk to myself or Pam, she's my election judge clerk, and we can answer any questions for you, so.
I've been election judge before, and it's a good experience.
Yeah, it is. You learn a lot. And I've been told that the trainings I did, I actually came for one tonight. I didn't know if I was gonna make it here. And I've been told several, several times that it's very, very informative, and it's a lot of information, but a lot that they get to take with them and review at home, too, so.
I know Mr. Woods has had students in the past.
Okay.
That he has worked with having election judges. We can check with him to see if he got the notification.
Yeah, if not.
Can I have those?
Yes, this is for you to give to them.
I've also been an election judge. It's very rewarding.
Yep, so, alright, thank you, guys.
Anybody else sign up, ma'am? Anybody else sign up, Matt? Okay. All right, then, let's go into finance. So I need a motion of board for approval of the bills and payroll for LaSalle High School. Please note that attrastation and one additional bill that came in late for transportation is for Johannes. So that is attrastation review.
I like a motion.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for the bills and payroll, LP Eric Career Center?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for the payroll report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And then I would need a motion of board for approval of the financial records as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. Okay, under correspondence, we had a thank-you card from Mr. Gerald Walter and family for his memorial arrangement and support in memory of Mr. Gerald Walter Senior, father of Gerald Walter. Also, a really nice thank-you letter from LaSalle Police Department's Administrative Sergeant, Mr. Brian Zepron. He was expressing appreciation for the collaborative efforts of school personnel, Mr. Randy Hubie and Miss Kate Lance, an associate principal for school safety. This was, I guess they held it here, an active shooter's drill during the day off.
Yep, casualty class drill.
So Kate and Randy came in, and they had a little walkie-talkie drill. So that was very nice to leave a son there. And we have one tip reimbursement. This was from the City of Peru. The surplus distribution amount of $31,648.19. Okay, so for my presence report, I just wanted to mention that the board, the last couple of months, completed the annual evaluation of superintendent Dr. Buskey and have to report on a good evaluation. They're doing very well, just moving forward. So we appreciate your hard work and our team, your administration team and staff support all that effort. So we appreciate that. Good luck in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I appreciate that.
Okay, board committee reports. Building and grounds. Mr. Sarver is here tonight. He'll be reviewing the reporting.
I'll be happy to give the report. So we had, we met on Monday, March 13. We provided an update on the beginning work of the complex Phase II project. So work officially began on Tuesday, yesterday. So Mrs. Cushing and I had a chance to go take a road trip up to the complex to have some preliminary conversations. Joe Schutt was in town to be there as well. So that was, it's nice to see that. And Pohar has got equipment up there now as well, and they're beginning to move forward with the beginning stages. Yep, yep, yep. So we're very excited about that. We do have an action item for the board tonight. It's also related to the complex. The other part of our project is, there's two components to that. You've got the Vernon Jones project, but then there's also a project that Architects is managing, and that's going to be the bidding and the construction of the press box, concession stand, storage building that will be at the baseball softball complex, as well as the addition of actual bathrooms to the soccer building. So Mike's office is handling that. That'll be an action item we'll have bids. The committee is recommending to move forward with that. We also reviewed the bid, bids we received for the nurses' office renovation project. This was probably one of the tightest, the closest bids, openings that we had in terms of the spread among the pre-bidders. Vistery Construction was the low bidder for $380,700. The committee is recommending the board to award the contract to Vistery for that. And then the project for that would begin as soon as the school year ends. Committee also reviewed the recommendation from Vernon Jones for the teardown bill and rehabilitation, I guess, or reconstruction, to get better choice of word, for existing tennis courts. We know, we've had reports over the last year or so, some issues that we've been having with them. Is be approved our health, life, safety amendment for this work. So we'll be able to access our health, life, safety funds for this project. The cost for that is $801,000 for that, and the committee is recommending to, for the board to approve that. We had, we're in some of the process of reviewing proposals for the track resurfacing. So we don't have a report or there's no recommendation at this point. Likewise, too, we are going to have a follow-up meeting with our ad hoc security team to review the proposed or projected costs for the greeter station renovation. So we'll have more report for that at next month's meeting once we've had a chance to talk with the ad hoc team, as well as then to share this with the ACC Board of Control to get their input. Two other action items I do want to draw your attention to. One is the approval to hire Able Plus Services, Inc. This is an abatement firm out of Gilbert, Illinois, that would perform the work to abate the second-floor tile asbestos in the Dolan Building. The cost for that is $24,800. Mr. Brad Brown's firm is providing the engineering oversight for that. Committee is recommending that. And we also are recommending to authority to purchase a, it's 2016, a Genie Scissor Lift, which is, it goes higher than the one that we have right now. We're recommending to purchase this from MH Equipment in Ottawa for $23,990. And this will save not only resources from not having to rent the equipment, but it will also be able to provide Mr. Tomonello more flexibility in getting work done when it needs to get done and not trying to bundle it. And that's all I had. Unless, Mr. Ferrari, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
I covered everything.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, finance.
In a lot of instances, we reviewed the same things, and we met on Tuesday. As you probably noticed in the monthly financials, we're 66.7% through the fiscal year, the year of the school district year. And there's some anomalies in there. And the anomalies in the revenue side, we're at 133.5% of budget. That is because of the receipt of the bond issuance. So that will be revised in the upcoming budget. But that is what that relates to. Same thing on the expense side. We're at 69.97 of expenses, and the only reason we're over on expenses, and you see that anomaly or that large line, is because of the transfer of the deposits out of working cash that we approved here to do prior to receiving the bond issuance and getting that approved. So just wanted to mention that. And things are in line, really, year-to-date with the budget and everything else. So we do have an action item that we recommend for the fees that are in the agenda. We did review them and go through them, discussed all the changes. There really aren't that many changes, but all the changes we discussed, and we recommend approval of that. We also looked at and talked over the nurses' office renovation bid recommendation, and also recommend that for approval also. And the tennis court. Again, Steve stole all my thunder. Which is perfect. We also recommend that for approval. And, you know, the track resurfacing. I mean, that is a thing that's normally required with those tracks. It's that time again. It's hard to believe. It's that time to already resurface it. Yep. But we also recommend that also, and we're recommending bids on that, right?
Yeah, we got the proposal, so we're evaluating the proposals now.
And also reviewing the cost estimates for the greeter station in the Dolan Building. We also have another agenda item that's in your packet regarding the creation of a field trip program activity account. And really, to not go into it too much, it just allows them to separate and keep track of those funds separately. It's just a separate account for that. We also talked about the scissor lift and recommend that for approval, and the Able Plus Services, the hiring of them also. And then we also discussed the, or talked about the recommendation regarding the updated changes and approval of staffing that's coming up later in our agenda. And that was handed out, I think, outside of our packet.
Yep.
I think that's everything. I think that's all.
So as far as the fees go, are no changes or minor changes?
No, there's still minor changes.
Nothing of any significance?
No, we're recommending to add fees for the sports medicine classes. This is the first year. And there are going to be costs, more costs associated with tape and more consumable supplies.
I see.
That, recommend that's part of the class. Part of the class, yeah. And then AP European History is a new class. It's rolling out this fall. There is an AP review booklet that kids are able to purchase. That's going to be real aid for their help with their success on the AP exam.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, admin reports.
Thank you. Couple things just to highlight. Kind of in the line, I keep in the line of celebrations, I wanted to announce the selection of the ROE Excellence in Education recipients for this year. Sherri Kurtz, special education teacher. Jason Miller, our interim dean of students. And Andrea Eichelkraut, one of our counselors, will be our three certified staff recipients. Christina Sarabia, who moved into the data management specialist position, taking over Bobby Newell's position, is going to be our honoree for our non-certified. We're going to be recognizing two retiring staff members, Ed Yoder of the Science Department, Teresa Wolf, one of our paraprofessionals. And we will be honoring our retiring board presidents, Mr. Tony Sparks, after 16 years of service as well. So we'll wait for that celebration a little. I do want to also give out a couple additional kudos. I want to give kudos to Mrs. Cushing, who had been selected and invited to sit on the panel to speak to a group of aspiring principals. I think it's always a great honor to be selected among your peers, to be able to speak to those that are giving consideration to joining this side of the profession. As we know, that there is a huge need, not only for aspiring principals, aspiring leaders, but also teachers. So I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Cushing on her selection. She represents the district. I also want to give additional kudos to, well, once again, to Mrs. Cushing and Mr. Gibson. They were both recipients of a substantial scholarship through the IESA. It's the Moon Scholarship, and it's a competitive application process for administrators that are working on either their doctorate and specifically their superintendent's endorsements. And both Mrs. Cushing and Mr. Gibson are both in that process. There were 2021 applicants from around the states that applied, There were twenty, twenty-one applicants from around the states that applied and they were in the, in the top seven. And I just want to call that out because, one, it's, it's great for them, but it's great to have, not only just one, but we have two from LP High School. I think that speaks very highly of the quality of the, of the leaders that we have here on staff. So I just, I wanted to say congratulations again to, to Mrs. Cushing and Mr. Gibson on, on your selection. And I, for full transparency, I am on the selection committee, but I'm one among several other administrators and other members of the, of the ISA board. So, um, they had to be, they had to impress the other members of that committee as well. I do want to also share, I want to report out on FOIA requests that we have received and provided complete action, a response to. We received a response from Bo Kim, who had asked for the bid tab for the window and entrance door replacement. We provided the, that information to them. And then we received a request from Karen Garcia, who had requested information for contact information regarding staff, and that has been responded to as well. And then we have a couple other FOIA requests that are, that are open right now, but since those haven't been closed yet, I'll report out on those next month.
Okay.
That's all I have unless there are questions.
Okay. All right, principal report. Cushing.
Good evening. Few things to start off with are celebration types of things. In the, the past tense, I guess, we did have our high scholarship and we were able to honor two hundred and sixty students. And almost every one of them actually came to the program. So that was very nice to, to see everyone out in a packed house there. Those were students who had a three point five or higher for either three, five, or seven semesters. So that was a very nice evening that we had. Forward, fast forward, we're going to have the ceremony for our students who made it into the Honor Society. So that's just our seniors and that will be the last Thursday of the month here in March. So some, some fun things going on there. This week on Tuesday, yesterday I guess, we also had our career fair. So we had close to thirty different businesses that came in to the building. It's in collaboration with our sophomore class and some of the English classes. It's culminating project, but the students were able to, you know, introduce themselves and practice some of those skills and, and get acquainted with some of the businesses and some of the opportunities that will exist here in the, the community for them. Besides those types of things going on, there's also some, some work going on, on our side here for some of the, the things that will be happening soon. Summer school is already, talks already happening there. Looks like we'll be able to, to fill a full, full schedule of summer school. So I'll have those proposals for you guys very soon on the teaching and, and exact schedule that we'll have. Also, we've been working with Mrs. Whalen, Mr. Gibson, and myself and each one of the division chairs, looking forward to all the budgets for each of those divisions, talking through their needs and already thinking through for what, what they need for next year. Hard to believe since it's, it's March of this year, but we've been working on that. And then one last item that I want to highlight off of my report is we've started, or I have started something called Conversations and Cookies with Mrs. Cushing. As an English teacher, I'm hoping they get my alliteration, although I don't think one of them's picked up on it yet. But they do all like the cookies. And what's more important is, is that I've enjoyed getting to meet with all the freshmen, in the process of meeting with all the freshmen. And what's really great is I'm asking all of them to share with me one thing that they enjoy about being a Cavalier. They've had lots of great ideas. And then also what's one thing that they think we could do to make it an even better place? And so I tell them they can tell me anything they want and they've been coming up with all kinds of ideas. So some of those things we can handle in-house and who knows, maybe some of them will be things that eventually I come forward and, and, and make requests to, to all of you. So far, they've been very manageable. Little small requests here and there, like music in the hallways, things along those lines. But it's been very enjoyable to, to get to meet each one of the kids in that, that capacity. And I just thought I would, would let you know that we're not just sitting around eating cookies all together. There is a, is a method to my madness of actually hearing more about what the kids are enjoying here. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Athletic activities.
Good evening, everyone. The highlights of my report, you all had the, are ready this evening. Our wrestlers and our bowling teams and their successes that they've had throughout the season and going to state. We have moved on now to our spring season. Hard to believe with the weather that is outside, but we are actually in the midst of hosting our girls' home opener right now down the street. So the soccer game is going on and our boys varsity baseball team is actually able to kick off their game. Their opening game tonight is actually at the Joliet Slammers Stadium. They're playing Yorkville right now. So our spring sports are kicking off and going forward with that. Highlight a couple activities really fast, as you have probably heard and know, our Spring Musical is coming up, The Addams Family. Showtimes start this week, the seventeenth and eighteenth, and then again on Sunday the nineteenth at two o'clock. And the last one I want to really point out is our key club. They had the opportunity last week to go down to Springfield to be part of the District Convention and Leadership Conference. The kids had a great opportunity to learn some leadership skills, have some of those opportunities to go through those different things and just kind of give a different set of opportunities to our kids that some others might not have. Any questions? Excellent, thank you.
First, we just wanted to honor our Students of the Month for March, who were Kate McLeod, who's one of our programming students from LP, and Sahana Zilbiri, who's from Putnam County. She's a cosmetology student, both of them, just doing outstanding work and, and putting forth their best effort and, and especially in leading their classes. And next couple of things, our outreach to local businesses has really been sparking up. As you see in the report, this Friday we'll be out at PGI touring their facilities. That's, again, directly related to the donations by Mr. Kowalski. This morning, we had Vector in with a very, very good promising lead to starting up a, a paid internship program with them. So these connections with the community businesses are really, are going to provide big benefits for the kids at the school, whether it just be through shadowing or experiences like the tours, but also now for potential employment, very gainful employment as well. We got in our class requests as of last week. Nice, they finally, they went back up, so we're very happy with that. Of course, some of the numbers will shake out over the summer, but fully should be a, a fairly significant increase from last year. One of the nice things on that was to see the Health Occupations class requests go back up, where we took a hit from them last year. So it speaks well for the community too, because they're really very much needed. And then lastly, Nucor continues to come. They're another one of our community outreach partners. They've been coming over. And while they're a manufacturing outfit, they've been working with the students over in the Dolan Building in Culinary Arts, computer programming, childcare, doing soft skill practice with them, job interviews, and really putting them through their paces so they get a benefit of what it's like to sit in front of a group and, and be grilled about potential employment. And then lastly, just if you're interested in, and you're kind of, uh, interested in statistics, this one, obviously I picked because it was, it speaks well for what the ACC's mission is, but in your packet, there's a link to a longitudinal study done by Harvard that talks about what people's perceptions are, what they want from schools. And one of the interesting things about it is that it's rather schizophrenic in that people want school, uh, people want their kids to get solid tangible things from them and they ranked going to college almost toward, almost last in what priorities should be. But at the same time, they think their neighbors think that it should be at the very top of things. And so while they think one thing, they think everyone else is thinking another. So if you're interested in things like that, it's a very nice study to read, very well written and very well done. And it is longitudinal, so it's kind of gauging what we're doing now post-COVID and everything. Some nice reading in there. But if there's any questions? Thank you.
A few things. It's, it's hard to believe that it's only been, been a month. It feels much longer than that, but within, since we spoke last, Dr. Robleski, Mr. Kuziel and I put a lot of effort into preparing our community for groundbreaking ceremony for the sports complex. We had some special materials we made up, got some information out to the press, and also did a little community tour for some of our friends on Victoria Drive. Went really well. And so unfortunately, we didn't make it to your house, Ali. That's right. But yeah, they went really well. And then kind of along with that, we're beginning the, the scheduling for, to bring back the board administrator coffee talks with the community. So still finalizing some of that, but I think we, we are on, on the verge of having stuff ready to go later this month or coming into early next month. So that's really good. And, oh, I was going to say, our system getting good use, not only is it active right now, our new streaming system that is. Just earlier today, we were recording our, the junior high presentation or production of The Addams Family Musical. So that's, that's something we'll just, we, we can't do much with it, but we keep, we keep those in-house. But it's, it's nice to know that we have a much better system in place to, to capture that for, for school use. And also just, if you, if you don't know, I help oversee all the, the ticket sales, the online portion of the musical, and things are looking really good. I think we're, assuming we have good weekend door sales, we'll be just as, do sell just as many tickets as we did last year, if potentially more. So good things happening in that program. Thanks to Olivia. I know Mrs. Rukie was very excited to, to see the news tube coverage on the front page of the paper today. So yeah. Yeah. So lots of good things with that. Unless you have any other questions, otherwise I guess please come out and enjoy the show this weekend.
Let's get in a new business. So first up, we need to amend the agenda. This is, I'm sure you received something, but we need to add to Section 11, this would be eleven point one one D. This would be Mr. Bernie Wilkie, hallway security. This is to appoint him for hallway security effective April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. This is a new position and we'll now add the security staff fully staffed. So I would need a motion of the board for approval to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion of the board for approval of Hillman Pediatric Therapy, PC contract for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
And for approval to hire Viscering Construction, Speeder Illinois, for the Nurses Office renovation for an amount of three hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval to hire Vernon Jones, Sports Construction of St. Louis, Missouri, via the TIPS Purchasing Cooperative for Tennis Court Repairs for the amount of eight hundred and one thousand dollars.
So moved.
Is it, just as a point of clarification, is that subject to mutually acceptable contract? Can we put that in the?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
This is mutually acceptable contract between the Co-op and LP?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Good? Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, and then I need a motion of the board for approval to hire Able Plus Services. Do you vote on that?
I'll say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And now I would need a motion of the board for approval to hire Able Plus Services Gilbert Illinois for the Dolan Building, second floor tile asbestos abatement project for the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval to purchase a two thousand sixteen GGS three-two-three-two scissor lift from MH Equipment of Ottawa for the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school fees as presented.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval to let bids for the LP Athletic Sports Complex Support Buildings, Concession Stadium, Press Box, Storage, and Bath and Promotions to the soccer stadium.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval to establish a field trip activity.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And I would need a motion of the board for approval of the retirement of Mrs. Gladys Rainey, Rural Language Teacher, effective the conclusion of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of the resignations presented below?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of the appointments as presented.
So moved. Sorry.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. Okay, on eleven point one two, so this is a very large section. We have, this is for certified staff reappointments for twenty-three, twenty-four, which is inclusive of part-time status employees. We have first year probationary teachers, second year, third year, and then finally six teachers who will be granted tenure. So I would need a motion of the board for approval of all those reappointments as presented.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval to rehire the administrative positions for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of the staff reduction of force for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, this is due to funding that will probably come later. So this is something to go through annually until the funding then becomes available and we will handle that in a different way.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And then I would need a motion of the board for approval of staffing recommendations based on the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four student enrollment and the extracurricular openings as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And I would need a motion of the board to adjourn to executive close session for special minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purposes of approval via the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of minutes and the imminent pending litigation, the open session and possible action.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. Yes.